Okay. Good evening, everybody. And we, as a board, extend our gratitude for you joining us this evening. We are so excited to celebrate with each of you our valued colleagues. And we have a number of student athletes and scholars to celebrate this evening as well. And so, without further ado, we will get started with roll call.
All board members are present.
If you please rise and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Wall is going to lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a number of very, very special presentations, including our service awards for our valued employees. So, thank you for joining us. We're going to do things a little differently this year. We are going to take pictures of our 20-year award winners, our 25-year award winners. So, stay up in this area, and we're going to snap pictures as we go along. And Mrs. Taylor is going to snap those for us.
Okay. We are very pleased to have such a great turnout for our service award recipients. Thank you. And Corinne Middleton, Director of Human Resources, will lead that. And as you do, I will greet you up here with your certificate, but Corinne will take it from here.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Wall. I just want to reiterate Leila's gesture of thanking everyone for being here tonight. It is such a special night, and I'm pleased to honor many employees who have been here 20, 25, 30, 35, 40, 45 years. It's amazing. And so, I just want to go over some facts that we are honoring 71 employees this evening, which equates to 1,675 years of service. And that equates to 309,875 days of service. So, it is quite an accomplishment. And as we go through the years, as we start each of the years, I'm going to just read off two fun facts for each, like 20 years ago, some interesting little tidbit fun fact. And before I do that, I just want to give recognition to my team members who helped put this on, Mindy Jason and Diane Matthews, as well as Food Service. And we have a couple of food catering students with us who were going around with the hors d'oeuvres. So, if we could just give them a round of applause. Okay. We're going to start with the 20-year recognition. And 20 years ago was 1996, 1997. And the first flip phone went on sale 20 years ago. And millions mourned when Princess Diana died in her car crash in Paris 20 years ago. Cindy Bany. Deborah Cox. Bill Davis. Matthew Dillon. Jerry Dolan. Kristy Ebbinghaus. Mark Ellington. Carol Erath. Judy Fisher. Madonna Gum. Phil Harvey. Emily Haasstetler. Chris Kane. Jennifer Lenz. Anita Montalone. Jerry Murphy. Rebecca Overby. Liz Quakenbush. Mike Rowe. Sherry Struve. Nancy Sullivan. Lila Thorp. Rhonda Trappkus. Kim Viveng. Erin Ween. Okay. Well, did we take 20-year? Okay.
96, 97. You see where we moved to Chicago?
Oh.
You're doing this one. I want to start the rest of the board.
Okay. Okay. 25 years ago took us back to the years 1991, 1992. People around the world first began to hear WWW after Tim Berners-Lee announced his idea for the World Wide Web. The Soviet Union formally dissolved, and the Gulf War came to an end. Mindy Brandt. Jackie Callahan. Amanda Dillon. Diana Dine. Candy Ganzel. Jeff Grant. Susan Kylie. Brenda Lester. Kathy Mahoney. Martha McFarland. Karina Mercer. Whitney Miller. Jim Peterson. Ernest Russell. Heather Erdel. And Julie Williams. Okay. Celebrating those with 30 years of service. 30 years ago, 1986, '87, the Colts celebrated their third year in Indianapolis after moving from Baltimore. Hands Across America literally united 6.5 million people in a line that stretched from New York to California. And Oprah Winfrey Show broadcasted for the first time. Okay. Joan Jackson. Carol Mayer. Paige Miller. And Trudy Young. Okay. 35 years ago takes us to 1981, '82. IBM introduced the first personal computer, and the U.S. debt reached $1 trillion. Okay. Frank Gardner. Kathy Gray. Sally McDougal. Maggie Merriman. Pam Stewart. And Mark Weaver. Okay. The one? Well, we're still going to recognize her. 40 years, 40 years of service. 1976, '77, Steve Jobs funded Apple Computer in his parents' garage. Janet Guthrie became the first woman to drive in the ND-500, and the U.S. Viking spacecraft landed on Mars. And it's Terry Cook who we're honoring tonight. Okay. 45 years, 45 years ago, 1972, Yogi Berra was elected to the Hall of Fame. The film The Godfather premieres in New York City, and Evel Knievel breaks 93 bones after clearing 35 cars. Dave Butcher. And I just want to say, it's not the years of service, but it's the moments that these people touched of so many children's lives, colleagues' lives, over the course of the years that have made such an impact, and we truly are grateful for your years of service. Thank you so much.
Okay. Hard to top that, but we're close. I'm going to invite Chris Plum to the podium. We have recognition of the boys and girls, swimming and diving champions, state champions. Chris? All right. If I could have the girls swim team come on up here.
Just want to thank all the parents, administrators, and the rest of our coaching staff. They do an amazing job. But in particular, these senior girls led the team to a national record, 31 state championships in a row. An outstanding job they're doing. And I'm going to have each of them come to the mic and tell us their plans for next year and their name. So, come on.
I'm Morgan Grau, and I'm swimming at the University of Iowa next year. I'm Caroline Schultz. I'm swimming at Kansas University next year. I'm Emma Ardene, and I'm going to be swimming at ASU next year.
I'm Annie Decker, and I will be diving at Wheaton College next year.
All right. Come on. Courtney, where do you want to?
I'll be second.
Shake the board's hands first, please.
All right. If I could have the boys come up? So, our boys team, again, I'd like to thank the parents, coaches, and administrators. They did an amazing job this year, state champions. Ford, I know, it's always after the girls, so just 17 state championships. We tried. But we did break multiple state records, and a national record, and several school records this year. So, they did an amazing job. Last year, they won by one point. This year, we won by a lot more. So, they've done a great job. So, I'm going to have them come to the mic and do the same thing.
I'm Matt Pacar, and I'll be going to Xavier University next year.
I'm Nick Benton, and I'll be going to Purdue University.
I'm Joseph Letcher, and I'll be going to the United States Naval Academy.
First off, is this allowed? First off, I'd just like to say thanks to all the teachers. None of us swimmers would be here without your flexibility, so we appreciate that. And, yeah, thanks. And I will be swimming at Harvard University next year.
I'd like to invite Chris Crakey to the podium, please, if I could. We're recognizing the Carmel High School Winter Guard 2017 World Class State Champions and 2017 Sport of the Arts Scholastic World Class Champions. Mr. Crakey.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will pause for one moment. This evening, we're, again, very appreciative of the opportunity to recognize the accomplishments of the Carmel High School Winter Guard. Winter Guard is a unique blend of athleticism and performance art that uses elements of dance flags, wooden replica rifles, and sabers, all to create an art form all set to a soundtrack of pre-recorded music. It is much easier to show you what these girls do, and it's pretty incredible stuff. So, leave it to the Performing Arts Department folks to bring a little entertainment and foreshow for this evening. I'd like to play a short, like, minute-and-a-half-long clip of the performance from the Winter Guard International Championships, just so that everybody can see the work that these ladies put in. Obviously, thank you. This season's production was entitled "Aribesque," which is an actual ballet movement, which I won't attempt to demonstrate for you this evening. And also, a graphic element with all the ornate scroll work and the name of the Claude WC Piano piece that they were using as their soundtrack. The CHS Winter Guard was ranked number one nationally throughout their entire 2017 season and finished the season undefeated in competition. They captured their eighth consecutive HSCGA World Class State Championship. Again, we're all behind the swim team with Ellen. But their eighth consecutive state championship and dominated all three rounds of their competition at the Winter Guard International World Championships in Dayton, Ohio over spring break and route to their fifth world championship title, joining their 2007 Open Class Championship and their World Class Championships in 2011, '13, and '15. Tonight, we brought nine of the members along with us, nine of the senior members of the group, to represent the entire ensemble here this evening. So, I'd like to present. Thank you. So, I'd like to present to you seniors Annie Bidding, Natalie Brand, Melody Gal, Kylie Hauser, Stella Mo, Emily Paul, Devon Raver, Kristen Sams, and Taylor Williams. Thank you very much.
I'd like to invite Mrs. Jennifer McFarland to the podium, please. She's the Director of Food Service. We're presenting an Indiana School Nutrition Scholarship this evening. There you go. Jennifer?
Good evening. I am proud to recognize Susan McCord. Susan McCord is our cafeteria manager at Collegewood Elementary. She serves as our green team liaison, and she also leads up all of our school garden initiatives. Susan was one of three recipients for the State of Indiana to earn a scholarship to attend the National School Nutrition Conference in Atlanta, Georgia this summer. So, Susan will have a four-day trip with airfare, hotel stay, and all of her travel accommodations included, and she is the only recipient of our district to earn that honor. So, please welcome and congratulate Susan.
We have, at this time, public participation, and we will have an opportunity for everybody to perhaps do other things this evening besides sit and listen to our business, but we would love for you to stay and join us. But I do think with our public participation being our Carmel Schools Yes Pack, I thought it might be nice if everybody heard what they had to share. So, that being said, I call to the podium Tricia Hackett for public participation. I'd like to remind you, you have three minutes to share your comments. Thank you.
Break, multiple state records and a national record and several school records this year. So, they did an amazing job. Last year, they won by one point. This year, we won by a lot more. So, they've done a great job. So, I'm gonna have them come to the mic and do the same thing.
I'm Matt Pacar and I'll be going to Xavier University next year.
I'm Nick Benton and I'll be going to Purdue University.
I'm Joseph Letcher and I'll be going to the United States Naval Academy.
First off, is this so loud? First off, I'd just like to say, thanks to all the teachers. None of us swimmers would be here without your flexibility, so we appreciate that. And, yeah, thanks. And I will be swimming at Harvard University next year.
Be recognizing the Carmel High School Winter Guard 2017 World State, World Class State Champions and 2017 Sport of the Arts Scholastic World Class Champions. Mr. Crakey.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I will pause for one moment. This evening, we're, again, very appreciative of the opportunity to recognize the accomplishments of the Carmel High School Winter Guard. Winter Guard is a unique blend of athleticism and performance art that uses elements of dance flags, wooden replica rifles, and sabers, all to create a art form, all set to a soundtrack of pre-recorded music. It is much easier to show you what these girls do, and it's pretty incredible stuff. So, leave it to the Performing Arts Department folks to bring a little entertainment and for show for these evening. I'd like to play a short, like, minute and a half long clip of their performance from the Winter Guard International Championships, just so that everybody can see the work that these ladies put in. This season's production was entitled Arabesque, which is a actual ballet movement, which I won't attempt to demonstrate for you this evening. And also, a graphic element with all the ornate scroll work and the name of the Claude WC Piano piece that they were using as their soundtrack. The CHS Winter Guard was ranked number one nationally throughout their entire 2017 season and finished the season undefeated in competition. They captured their eighth consecutive HSCGA World Class State Championship. Again, we're all behind the swim team with Ellen. But their eighth consecutive state championship and dominated all three rounds of their competition at the Winter Guard International World Championships in Dayton, Ohio over spring break and route to their fifth world championship title, joining their 2007, or their 2007 Open Class Championship and their World Class Championships in 2011, 13, and 15. Tonight, we brought nine of the members along with us, nine of the senior members of the group, to represent the entire ensemble here this evening. So, I'd like to present, thank you. So, I'd like to present to you seniors Annie Bidding, Natalie Brand, Melody Gal, Kylie Hauser, Stella Moe, Emily Paul, Devon Raver, Kristen Sams, and Taylor Williams. Thank you very much.
She's a Director of Food Service. We're presenting an Indiana School Nutrition Scholarship this evening. There you go. Jennifer.
I am proud to recognize Susan McCord. Susan McCord is our cafeteria manager at Collegewood Elementary. She serves as our green team liaison and she also leads up all of our school garden initiatives. Susan was one of three recipients for the state of Indiana to earn a scholarship to attend the National School Nutrition Conference in Atlanta, Georgia this summer. So, Susan will have a four-day trip with airfare, hotel stay, and all of her travel accommodations included, and she is the only recipient of our district to earn that honor. So, please welcome and congratulate Susan.
We have at this time, public participation, and we will have an opportunity for everybody to perhaps do other things this evening besides sit and listen to our business, but we would love for you to stay and join us. But I do think with our public participation being our Carmel Schools Yes Pack, I thought it might be nice if everybody heard what they had to share. So, that being said, I call to the podium Tricia Hackett for public participation. I'd like to remind you, you have three minutes to share your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the board, oh, I need to state my name and address. Tricia Hackett, 12432 Glen Durgan Drive, Carmel, Indiana, 46032. Members of the board, Superintendent Wall, staff, members of the community, Carmel residents will be asked to vote to continue the Carmel Clay Schools Operational Referendum May 2nd, a replacement referendum for the one approved in 2010. I've worn many hats over the years, and I'm here to share why a yes vote is necessary from every one of these perspectives. I started my professional career as a special education teacher. Excellent educational opportunities rely on a school district's ability to attract and retain the best possible staff. A top-notch staff is built on commitment, ingenuity, and the funding to make it all possible. Then it became apparent, this fourteen and a half million dollar referendum funds 260 positions and many programs in which our students thrive. Without this funding, class sizes will balloon at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, and many programs such as middle school teaming, advanced classes, performing arts, sports, things we just saw, will need to be considered for reduction. Now, my children have graduated from Carmel High School, but I continue to be a property owner. I wear that hat now. Nearly eighty percent of homeowners consider the quality of schools to be a driving factor in where to buy a home. Well-supported schools affect your property value, even if you choose to send your child to a private school, or are an empty nester, or are retired. Strong schools equate to a strong community. Now, I serve, or I did serve on the school board for over eight years. I wore that hat. I can verify that this district has long prioritized being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollar. For example, I know that Carmel Clay Schools refinanced three bond issues in the past four years to save taxpayers almost seven million dollars. I know that every district facility has a state-of-the-art energy management system, saving further dollars. I know that in 2010, CCS implemented a four-day work week during the summer and has saved over seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars in utility expenses. I know that in 2010, CCS established a cultural, culture of wellness and has enjoyed no health insurance premium increase in the past four years. That's unheard of. And now, I wear the hat as the Carmel Clay Schools Pack, Carmel Schools Yes Pack Co-Chair. Our mission is to ensure the passage of this important replacement referendum. If you don't go vote, it won't pass. So, please, join me May 2nd and vote yes for our students, for our staff, and for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have consent. May I have a motion on the table to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have our reports, and our first report is our math program evaluation recommendations. Into that, we'll turn to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. This evening, we're pleased to bring you some teachers from our math departments and math teachers at the elementary school that will share our program evaluation recommendations that they worked on. The committee started last year in the spring semester and went through the fall, and then they moved right into materials adoption, which we'll talk about a little bit later. So, I'd like to present Ms. Amanda Pond, who is our supervisor of learning, that has led our program evaluation. And also with us, we have Amy Luna from Cherry Tree Elementary. We have Pam Lacy from Carmel High School, and we have Betsy Howard from West Clay.
If I might, just for the board's edification, normally, this would have been a workshop topic, as we know, we did not have one in April, so this recalibrates into a presentation now, and then the adoption material will be reviewing later, as Amy said. Without further ado, we have the math.
Thank you. So, just real quick, we're gonna go over what we're gonna cover here in a second, and I'm gonna let the teachers kind of take over, because they're the main participants of the process. We're gonna review the program evaluation purpose for mathematics, as well as the process, and then we'll share the recommendations that came out of that process. And then, we're gonna allow you guys, because they've not been experienced, but brings in one of those recommendations that we're going to discuss. And then, we'll cover some next steps in the near future that we're gonna review. So, without further ado, I'd kind of teach.
Ladies, if you could, you'll have to be behind the podium to talk into the mic. Thanks.
Okay. Do we just hit the arrow? Okay. Okay. So, the purpose of the program evaluation was to study the current math practices in Carmel Clay Schools to see where we are, K through 12, and then, as a result of that, be able to provide some feedback and some recommendations for what we want to do moving forward in terms of professional development, decisions about curriculum materials and things like that.
The process that we went through in doing the evaluation started with gathering a group of stakeholders from the community and the schools, looking at the research and best practice, math standards in the state and the national standards, collecting data, analyzing it, looking at our strengths and weaknesses as a district, and then coming up with recommendations that we are going to propose tonight to the board.
So, we're gonna go through our recommendations, and so, the first recommendation that we have is that mathematics instruction should really be a balance of conceptual and procedural learning, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes, and we're gonna do a demonstration to help you understand what the difference is between conceptual and procedural learning. Our second recommendation is that mathematics instruction should really be a balance between technological activities and non-technological-driven activities and instructional strategies. And so, we really, the research showed that a good balance of that is really important. Our third recommendation is that teachers should provide students with respectful math tasks, and what that means is that they're providing tasks that are age-appropriate and also linked to whatever skills or standards or strategies that they're teaching, and so they're appropriate for the current lessons. And also with that, it's important that teachers give timely, specific, and descriptive feedback, and descriptive feedback is feedback that will allow students to understand where their, where their misunderstandings are and be able to move forward with their learning and, and know how to make changes.
The fourth standard really ties to all the things that Amy just spoke about, and that's professional development and collaboration time for staff and teachers and coaches to make sure that all of the things that we are recommending are carried out to the highest standard that Carmel Clay is known for. So, and then, to make sure that our adopted curricular material should include and emphasize the integration of the math content process standards and then the Indiana State Standards for Math.
So, I mentioned that we would address the conceptual versus procedural learning in a little bit, and so, this is just a quote that kind of explains the difference. But basically, when students are learning conceptual, conceptually, they're learning the concept behind why something works in math. And that's very important for them to understand the procedural part of the process. And when you think procedural learning, you think steps of a process, and so, problem-solving steps or formulas, for instance, but in order to understand why the formula works, you have to first have the conceptual knowledge, and they kind of, they really go hand in hand. And so, we wanted to give you an example of a lesson that includes both of those types of learning.
Okay, perfect. So, your learning targets for this evening are, you are gonna be able to use a formula to convert degrees to radians. You're going to be able to explain why the formula to convert degrees to radians works using mathematical terminology, and when we're done, you're gonna be able to describe how and when you might apply the concept of converting degrees to radians. So, I hope you guys are ready.
Do you all have pens?
So, this is a lesson that I teach in my pre-calculus class. It's a trigonometry standard, as she mentioned, but it's to get students to have a tactile understanding of what a radian is. So, the first step I'll have you do is go ahead and fold the paper plate in half, and then, you'll fold it in half again, trying to make it into exact quarters. So, the way to make it into exact quarters would be to fold it in half so that the crease that you previously created touches the other side. So, it's not prettiest, but you can see, hopefully, that we've now created different angle measures and some of our more standard angle measures. So, the one created here would be ninety degrees, around half of the circle would be a hundred and eighty degrees, two hundred and seventy degrees, and then a full circle would be three hundred and sixty degrees. And students are typically familiar with degree measure, but then, we start using radian measure, and students aren't familiar with what a radian is. So, what I will have you do with the string, if you try to place one end of the string on the center of the circle and the other along one of the sides, you should notice that it is about the length of what we call the radius of the circle. So, what I'll have you do is make a mark on the edge of your circle, wherever you're starting, and then, take this string and start measuring around about how many times the string fits around the outside of the circle. And feel free to make marks so you can kind of count how many times that piece of string, again, traces along the outside of the circle.
feel free to jot that number on your paper plate.
Did you all get a little bit more than six? Okay. Yeah, good. That's good. So, if you remember back to your geometry days, what you've just measured is the circumference around the circle, and that circumference, if you remember the formula, is two pi r, or two pi times the radius of the circle. And if we define this radius as one, then that means the circumference of this paper plate would be two pi. So, what we then do is we equate the length around the circle to the degree measure. So, what a radian does is it is more detailed than a degree measure, and a degree measure will tell you an angle measure of any circle, whereas a radian will not only equate with the degree, but also how long the arc length is. So, if you equate three hundred and sixty degrees to two pi, if you were to fold your plate in half, anybody know what half of two pi is? One pi, or pi, yes. So, a hundred and eighty degrees would be equivalent to pi radians, and then, if you were to fold it into a quarter, making a ninety-degree angle, that ninety-degree angle would be representative of pi over two radians. So, that's the conceptual understanding of a radian being the length, or how many radius, radii, sorry, fit around the circle, and this is used for many engineers who are making anything with a curve or an arc length, and they need more detailed information about the length of that arc compared to just the degree measure that is related to that arc.
Okay. So, now, you're gonna learn the procedural way to figure out the same information as opposed to the conceptual activity that you just did. So, I have a formula for you to learn, and that's the degrees times pi over one eighty. So, if we start with three hundred and sixty degrees, you can use your pens and the paper plates that you've been given as your paper, and you would pop your three hundred and sixty into the word where it says degree and then multiply across and see if you can come up with what we've already learned is two pi. Awesome, yes. And then, if you do the same with a hundred and eighty degrees, obviously, we know if we put a hundred and eighty degrees here and we cross simplify, we end up with just pi. And if you put in ninety degrees, does anybody can work that out quickly to pi over two? Okay, awesome. So, that is the procedural formula that students would learn after doing the conceptual activity, and are we gonna discuss? Is that you?
Yeah, so, so, the procedural understanding is important to also know instead of not just the conceptual understanding, in case you have a degree measure that is not so common. So, say, we're trying to figure out the radian of seventeen degrees. Well, seventeen doesn't nicely get divided by a hundred and eighty, so you would need to use the procedural understanding, the formula, rather than the fractional understanding with the conceptual method.
Okay, perfect. So, to wrap up this piece of our presentation, I'm gonna refer back to our learning targets that we gave at the beginning of the lesson, and that is, you've been able to use a formula to convert degrees to radians. That was your procedural learning target that taught you the how to do something, and it gave you the needed skill to be able to convert, as Pam just said, any degree into the correct measurement of radians. And then, your second learning target was, I can explain why the formula to convert degrees to radians works using mathematical terminology, and that is the conceptual target that was illustrated through the use of the paper plate and the string and that hands-on learning that is also important when students are learning about math, especially when it's a new and difficult concept in the classroom.
And as we wrap up, the next steps, obviously, we're going to be talking about the materials here in a couple seconds, and we're gonna review those recommendations with staff. We'll start some curriculum mapping and course realignment with the 2014 Indiana Standards and then, the college and career readiness standards, and then, we'll start providing professional development centered around those different curriculum maps and course realignment to ensure that the teachers know what to do with those maps once they're created. And then, finally, I'd like to thank a million, just all the teachers, all the staff, every, obviously, every teacher who's teaching math out there in the district, as well as our presenters, Pam and Amy and Betsy, and all the community members and the parents that participated in our program evaluation to begin with, because they put in a lot of hours and a lot of hard work, so we greatly appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much, Amanda, Pam, Amy, and Betsy. I'm glad your names are written down on here, because I didn't recall that from earlier. I will open up the floor with questions for the board. My, I guess my biggest question for you as a team, did you see or recognize, or are there a lot of areas that you felt like we need to make improvements or just like modifications? Because it seems like we're doing things pretty well.
We are. We're doing wonderful things. I think the main areas that we discovered was finding a blend of a lot of things. We'd kind of, we talked about our story at the beginning. We gathered some information from all the teachers and told our Carmel Clay stories. Where have we been over the last Where have we been over the last few years? And what came out of it is we were kind of swinging either really, for example, the conceptual versus procedural. We went from a very procedural process to a very conceptual process, and we found that in the research it said we need to be somewhere in between. Same with technology. We were using a lot of non-technological things, and then we kind of swung to, well, let's try and do all kinds of things with technology, but we needed a blend. So we were finding from all the research, it was more about a blend of everything than really swinging back and forth. So I think that's where we were trying to land with the majority of the recommendations was somewhere in the middle.
Questions from the board? Lynn?
I have a few questions. So the activity we just did comparing conceptual versus procedural, is that part of Algebra II at Carmel High?
No, it's part of a pre-calculus class.
Okay. Is that for honors or the regular class?
As aligned with the Indiana standards, it's technically, it's a trigonometry concept. So it is aligned with our pre-calc/trig course. However, and that's what part of the realignment is, to ensure that we have the specific standards with the appropriate course. There are some standards, like the unit circle that we were talking about, that we might hit on in honors algebra II, because that's preparing them to be, it's not something they would have to have mastered in honors algebra II, because they would need to master it in pre-calculus. But it might be introduced so that they are better prepared to master it in pre-calculus.
So is that, is that a recommended activity from the math department? And it's up to the teachers to choose whether to do it or not, or is it something else?
In this case, it would be a recommended activity, and it could be something that a teacher would bring to their professional learning community and discuss and share and say, this is, these are the things that the students benefited from doing this activity so that other teachers could potentially borrow it or kind of steal it from them. And they would want to bring data to support why this would be a great activity to be using. But it wouldn't necessarily be outlined specifically in a book.
I see. And I also have a question about the purpose of the evaluation. So it looks like you are looking at student achievement and then to make recommendations to get feedback. What are the goals of the math department? So like you want a certain percentage of students to pass I-Step or percentage exceeding one meeting standards? What are the goals of the math department?
Do you guys want to talk to that in your PLCs?
Or math program?
I can, I can mention a little bit. I think it's per subject, sorry. Per subject area, we have different, different goals, and I think that's up to the professional learning community to establish for, for that group.
So do you use the achievement data to evaluate if you achieve the goals?
We typically will look at our final exams and evaluate the final exam data to see if it is aligning with our goals.
And one of our goals, obviously, is for all of our students to achieve the standards and to be successful in math. We want to make sure that we are providing them that just right instruction in math and also making sure that our students are taking the courses that are appropriate for their future plans, because there are a lot of different paths once we get to the high school in math. But our ultimate goal is for all of our students to be successful. And we look at that data individually for all of our students to see, are they growing and learning? We use our common assessments that we have with our midterms and our final exams as well. And then our, at the high school level, we have our PLCs where they have the opportunity to work together to look at that data, to determine what are those best practices? How did our students learn this? How did they do? And what are we doing with the students that have not learned it? What will we need to do to help ensure that they do learn that?
I see. And how frequent is this done, this program evaluation? Is it once a year?
No. Program evaluation is a six-year cycle that we look at what is our current, what is happening currently, and then what does the research tell us? We look at the research, we look at the data of our students' achievement, and we do this every six years in all of our different curriculum areas.
All right, thank you.
Katie?
I have a question. Could you give me a couple more examples? For math, this is, this is me, like, this is what I like. What are, besides hands-on activities, conceptual, what are some other conceptual? I mean, is that, would it be hands-on or what are some other conceptual practices?
It doesn't necessarily have to be hands-on and tactile. Obviously, there can be some technological or non-technological items. Do you guys have some examples that you would maybe be able to share?
Mine are mostly hands-on, like elementary school.
Using a graphing calculator, especially the TI Inspires at the high school level, there are a lot of programs that allow students to manipulate graphs and almost play games, in a sense, to, to learn the information. So while it's hands-on with a calculator, it's also a visual for students to see that. Often, a lot of conceptual understanding comes from discovery. So, for example, if you were talking about the laws of exponents in algebra, you might start by, one of the laws is that if you have a negative exponent, you move it to the denominator, it makes the exponent positive. And for an exponent to be simplified, it has to have a positive exponent. So instead of just telling a student that, which makes zero sense if you're just told that, you actually go through a process of seeing, okay, well, if you do, I'm trying to picture the lesson in my head, I apologize. You start with the number 2, and you raise it to the first power, what does that equal? You raise it to the second power, what does that equal? Raise it to the third power, what does that equal? And you start to see a pattern. Well, then you look at the pattern, you work backwards. Now that you get to 2 to the zero power, what would that have to be? 2 to the negative first power. Now, what would, if you follow, continue to follow the pattern, where would it be taking you? And so then they start to see why that pattern is emerging and how to apply that pattern to other numbers. And so that's a more conceptual understanding versus just giving the formula for it.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. You did a fantastic job sharing what the program evaluation results were, and we look forward to hearing some of the recommendations for some of the curriculum material. Next on our list, Roger, finances.
Okay, so I'll present our monthly financial report. You can see from the report that our, two things. One, that I would point out, this was a three-pay month, so our expenditures are greater this month with three pays, obviously, than they have been. And that also then has an impact to our cash balance, because our revenue from the state comes in very evenly over the course of the 12 months, and our referendum revenue has not come in at all. Thus, as I've mentioned previously, our, our cash balance will continue to decline until, you know, in May, we'll start to get some of that local property tax revenue, and it'll start going back the other way. So we're about where we would expect to be at the end of March, and respond to questions if you have them.
Well, for beginners, we appreciate you pointing out that there were three pay periods, because we saw that as a large discrepancy. And that was, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll open up the floor to questions.
If there are no questions, since the legislature has finished, we now have a school formula. I thought you might be interested in a bit of information about that. There was an article in the Indianapolis Star, and Carmel was mentioned in the Star. And so I thought it was timely to be able to give you some information specifically about Carmel as it relates to how we fared with the formula. So this is a printout from a group called a Legislative Service Agency, and they, they're very active during the legislative session. They'll run reports like this for the benefit of the legislators to, to see what impact various proposals on funding would have. And so this is the, the final impact and the, as to how it relates to Carmel. I would direct your attention first to the first column on the left, about halfway down, and you'll see dollars slash ADM. And so that's, that's a number that we talk about a lot. That's a number that's compared, that is the number that school districts compare themselves to with other school districts, with the statewide average, and so forth. So you can see that our funding in, does not have the header there, but that's for this year, for '16-'17, is $5,220 per student. And, and as the board knows, that number is made up of the foundation amount, which is directly above that, which every student in the state gets the same amount of funding, and then the complexity index, which you've heard a lot of discussion about that as well. And so those two, or what typically, the total of those two is what we're typically comparing when we talk about per pupil revenue. And you can see in the first year of this biennium, that, that amount increased 2.8% to $5,367. And then in the second year of the biennium, it increased 1.5%, $5,446. So that's good news up to that point. The 2.8% is very good for the first year. Carmel likely will be, receive one of the highest increases, but I would be hasten to add that 2.8% the first year and 1.5% the second year still is an average of 2.1%, which is still less than, than the CPI. So we're appreciative of the, of the, of the impact that the funding formula has, but I would not want the board or the, or the public to assume that we've received, you know, all this additional revenue. The statewide average, by the way, in the first year was 1.1%. So we certainly are improved over the average. And you'll notice that the complexity index for Carmel is a minus 28.5%. What has happened this year is, is overall that the complexity index was reduced 13.2% for the, for the entire state. And so what that means is, is that those dollars were essentially pushed up into the foundation. And so for low-funded school districts, you've heard of, you know, it's that complexity index that, that makes the difference between, you know, from the highest to the lowest. I mean, that's the, the single largest factor. And so as was in the previous biennium, there's, there's a trend here now for this biennium as well to reduce the complexity dollars statewide and then put those dollars up in the foundation. But when that is done, and if we, if we quote, well, what, how much did the, the foundation amount increase? For Carmel, that's 3.9%. And that sounds even better. But again, it's 3.9% there, but a minus 28.5%. And since, since both of those components go into the general pot as opposed to that categorical funding, it's, it's important to understand that. Another thing I would point out is if you go near the bottom, you see another total dollars per ADM. This was the, and it's 3.3% or $5,982. That was the number quoted in the, in the recent article in the paper. I would not have used that number, because that's total funding. And so the board knows with money following the child, if you, and we did grow, we're showing a growth of, of just under 50 students. So if, let's, but let's say we were growing 500 students. Well, clearly, the total dollars would go up a significant percentage, but if we, if we focused on that, along with the, you'll see the additional dollars that we're receiving under spatial education. That's because we're either having additional students in spatial education and/or most likely it's a combination of larger numbers of spatial need students in, in the severe programs, which, which provides, you know, additional dollars. And so I would not use the number at the bottom, because that has growth and it also has categorical funding. And so, again, if you had significant amounts of growth, it would, it would show a significant increase, but that may be misleading, because if you have additional growth, of course, you're going to need additional staff and so forth. So it's, it's not, in my view, the best line here to give some reflection of, of how well we're financed. And then the last thing I would say is that, so this is good news, and certainly in terms of the first year, but we're also sensitive about this, because we are, you know, asking for a referendum, and I would not want the board or the public to think that this funding formula closes that gap that we've been talking about. Carmel remains the second lowest funded with this formula. We remain the second lowest funded in the state, and so that overall picture has not changed. But there are some, you know, positive elements about this year's funding formula. Last thing I would say is, is that for Carmel, as you know, last year and the year before, the state provided an amount of money for a teacher performance grant. That amount of money last year was $40 million. This year, it's $30 million. But more significantly, for Carmel, in previous years, the dollar amount was driven based on student performance. And so, as you know, Carmel students overall performed very well, highest in the state typically. And so that generated $2.4 million. That performance grant was replaced this year with something called TAG or the Teacher Appreciation Grant. And this year, the grant provides $30 per student, and so it has nothing to do with student performance. And so when you do the math on that, we will receive $479,000. So there's a loss there of a million, 1.9 million dollars. And so our teachers last year received a, a performance grant on average of over, about $2,400, I believe, well over 2,000. And this year, that number will look more like three, maybe less than 400. And so you can see, so for Carmel specifically, Carmel teachers, they'll see a significant impact there. The percentage increase on the, on the, what I previously showed, that 2.8% is better than it was this year. But the performance amount is significantly less. The additional gain, by the way, between our 2.8% and the 1.1% average is about 1.3 million. So the net difference, you can see, but we lost 1.9 on the performance grant. So total dollars, we did not fare well in that, in that change.
We'll make these documents on Google Docs tomorrow, so if you want to reflect back on them.
Thank you, Roger. I'll open the floor to questions. Katie?
So just to clarify, with the article in the Indy Star, it was 5,009 something? That money appears, and we don't want people confused, Sally's student's not going to have that much money at, for their education. I mean, that's compiling all the different factors into it, correct?
Yes, you can see from the, near the bottom of this, the 5,0982 includes not only that foundation amount in the complexity index, but the, below that is all categorical funding. And so, and, and you can see our spatial ed funding went up significantly, 7.5%, or about a half a million dollars. And so, but that, but that means we will have more needs specific to spatial education, and those dollars by, by law will be, must be spent appropriately for those students. And so that does not help the overall financial condition of the school district. It just really reflects growth in that program.
Other questions? Pam?
Well, it's not really a question. I also pulled the information offline, and according to the state estimated, this is taking in everybody, the average for everybody. When you get down to the total ADM for 2017, it's $5,893 across the state, average-wise, and we are getting $5,220. So there's quite a difference between what even the average of the state money is and what we are receiving.
Right, right. And I'll connect that dot in the referendum update here in just a minute.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's good.
Exactly right.
You're setting the table. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move to discussion. Dr. Dudley?
Thank you. This evening for discussion, I present to you the math materials adoption. These materials come, we have a committee of teachers, administrators, and parents that reviewed the recommendations that were just shared with you, and they looked at the standards, they analyzed the materials to see how well they matched those recommendations, best practice research, student achievement standards, and curriculum requirements. And so they are recommending adoption. We are actually recommending re-adoption of Everyday Math 4, and this will be our fourth adoption, our third adoption of Everyday Math. We are, the materials have The materials have changed. They have been updated, however, but we still feel like it has been... These materials have helped our students to be very successful. Our math scores in the elementary have increased dramatically and that spiral program has been an excellent program for our students. We are also recommending a re-adoption of Big Ideas Math in the middle level. Those materials also have been updated. And then, we have some changes in our high school math program. So, you can see them on the spreadsheet. We are also recommending Number Worlds for certain math programs that are for special needs for our life skills math programs and some other math programs specific to our FAP classes. Do you have questions?
My first question, the yellow... The highlighted yellow boxes, are those the changes or the new books that you're adopting? Or what is that?
On which one?
On the high school. Let me pull it up. I was looking for a legend or something and I didn't see one, so I just... It should be the first.
Okay. The highlighted ones will be continued use for one year because these are students like, for example, the Discovering Algebra. We will continue that. These are students that are taking algebra off track. So, where they took Algebra 1-1, they're taking Algebra 1-1 in the spring and they're taking Algebra 1-2 in the fall semester. So, we'll continue to... They're using Discovering Algebra. And then, they'll continue that for the fall semester. So, it's not a... That's what those are. It's not... It doesn't interrupt the sequence.
Okay. And then, you'd said you've made a number of changes at the high school level. How do I know... Are these all new textbooks, though?
The one, Discovering Geometry, we are re-adopting for our geometry courses. The other ones, they no longer have the Discovering except for the continued use. They're going with a Pearson product with Algebra 1 for our Algebra 2, our trigonometry, pre-calculus trigonometry. Those are all new programs that they're adopting. Thank you. Yes, Katie?
So, will these new books and programs become in effect in this coming school year? So, in August?
Yes, correct. We'll use these materials from beginning in the 2017 year all the way to the 2023, which sounds way out there. But that's where our program evaluation process goes. Every six years, we do our program evaluation and then we re-adopt materials the next year. And so, that's our line.
I have a question about... Since in the mass program evaluation, they talk about a blend of technological and non-tech instructions maybe. So, I know that our district is using Canvas. And a lot of publishers here, the vendors of textbooks, they have homework system and a book embedded with Canvas. So, have we thought about integrating a taskbook on Canvas?
Yes. All of the materials that we're adopting all have technological components, all the way from our elementary through high school. And so, they have different technology features. And with Canvas for our learning management system, that will also be integrated. Some of them integrate seamlessly where they're all... They're tied in. Others, we... We would put them in where their links, but it would go through Canvas, that learning management system.
Okay. And how does that affect the taskbook rental fee?
The... What we try to do is the textbook rental fee will increase a bit because as far as the last time we purchased textbooks were six years ago, but we try to make sure that we're keeping that within the range of just kind of a cost of living or... So, they won't increase astronomically.
So, is the taskbook fee based on the real taskbook cost or something else? Because I thought that if you use the ebook within Canvas, it's normally cheaper. Like, in my class, when I use the Canvas, the book within Canvas, it's less than half of the book fee, the real book fee.
Well, we're... As far as what we're adopting, we're adopting the actual book with the technology features of it. We're not adopting just an ebook because our students... We still have a blend of those two pieces. And so... But it's not costing us double either. It's not costing us... We're not buying the ebook and the textbook fee. But it's still a blend because we still have the actual paper book. Thank you.
I've got a question. Have we used any of these books as pilot classes at the high school?
At the high school, no, we have not used these books. We did pilot... We did a small pilot with the Everyday Math IV and we did a small pilot with the Big Ideas books, but these other ones, we did not.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Well, great. If we have questions in the meantime, we will send them your way. And then, I'm assuming you're expecting an action vote in May?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving right along? Well, we're going back to Dr. Wall. Referendum update, please.
Thank you. Be presenting some information to our friends at Dad's Club tomorrow night. Wednesday night, we are at Smoky Row. And Thursday evening, we are at Town Meadow and Creekside. Also have a day meeting at Woodland on... Tomorrow. Woodland Terrace Retirement Community tomorrow as well. So, we've got a full slate of presentations this week and going quite well. We'll do... Continue to do Facebook Live to reach more of an audience. Our goal is to continue to educate, inform, so that we have informed voters on May 2nd and get that word out. We've also sent information out to remind people last week about the dates and the need for poll workers and all those things as well, just to kind of continue to facilitate the process for our election commission as well. We are going to add a slide to our presentation, the one in front of you. Hopefully, you can see that right now. In front of you regarding referendum update per pupil funding. As Roger stated and as Pam set the table perfectly, what we've been presenting is that we are the second lowest funded per pupil in the state of Indiana. As a result of this biennium, and again, this is just the facts, we still are. Zionsville would be the lowest. We see improvement, just like we did two years ago when Pam and I met with the legislators and Tricia and I met with the legislators and now Mike and I. So, we continue to see improvement. You know, on some of the presentations that Roger and Amy and I have made, we had a couple times where people said, "Well, didn't they fix that two years ago?" There's improvement. We wouldn't use the term fix. So, this is going to be a slide that goes to the presentation tomorrow, which is an accurate factual slide. For FY 2018, it's 2.8. 1.5 for FY 2019. You see the state average and what CCS will be getting and the below state average in red. So, as far as improvements, yes. As far as that changing our condition, we're still second lowest per pupil funded in the state of Indiana for the next two years as a result of this biennium. And again, I think that's a factual presentation. We want to use the board to know this. As, you know, Roger and I, we planned this presentation tonight, all of us, my team this morning, actually Amy as well, all of us planned this, Kareem, just to make sure we have the facts out there. It's clear that our goal is to make sure people understand what this means for us at Carmel High Schools. Pam? Okay?
2019, I have 5,446.
Okay.
Here. One. Instead of...
Well, that's fix 'em. Yes. Thank you. We will fix that. So, that'll be even a bigger red number. Five, four, five, six. We will tweak that. And these new documents that we worked on, we'll put those in the board Google Docs and Colleen will send you a link if you want to reference them later. But this will be added in the presentation as we start tomorrow, as you know, because, you know, people should ask. Yeah, this is straight off their form. Katie?
Would this also be shared just for people watching, like, since that we did find it's incorrect? Will this be shared on the referendum tab on our website?
Yes.
Okay. Just so that they make sure that they get the right numbers when that's changed.
Yeah, we haven't put this up anywhere yet.
Yeah, I know. So, but that will be on the website?
Yep.
Great.
Absolutely. You bet. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you for visiting so many venues.
You bet.
To share our message.
We will take it right to the day.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we have Mike with lots of legislative updates.
Well, I'm going to try and keep it short this month, but as everybody probably knows, the session ended last Friday, actually really early Saturday morning. And I'm going to keep it short because the Indiana School Board Association will be addressing all the new legislation at its spring meetings. But I will go over some of the bills we've been following closely. As an update, on April 11th, Dr. Wall and I had a very nice meeting with Senator Ruckelhaus. He expressed interest in coming to Carmel and I've recommended him for expedition for next year. On April 14th, several of the board attended the last One Zone Legislative Breakfast. As has been in the news, this was a budget year and as previously advertised, the session ended early Saturday morning, sending Governor Holcomb a $3.2 billion, two-year budget with 65 million per year in programs. The spending plan increases funding for education and pre-K. The Indiana House passed the budget 68 to 30 before midnight and the Indiana Senate voted 42 to 8 to pass the same bill after midnight. The budget boosts K through 12 education funding by 345 million over the next two years. As Dr. Wall and Mr. McMichael have already reported on the numbers for Carmel and what that... How that actually breaks out. And also, as Mr. McMichael shared with us, funding for what's called teacher performance or appreciation grants, they funded at 30 million, down from 40 million with a new formula, probably to address some of the negative press they got this session. And funding for the pre-kindergarten pilot program more than doubled to 22 million. I know higher numbers had been thrown out earlier in the session. The main bills that we've been following this session are House Bill 1003, Student Assessments, the new iLearn testing system. It passed the House 68 to 29 and the Senate 39 to 11. And the bill has been sent to the governor. The new test will be used for a first time in 2019, meaning iStep still has one more year of life left. Representative Benning, the bill's author, said teacher evaluations are still to be expected to be included in test scores in some way, but that the bill gives some flexibility to districts as to specifically how to incorporate them. I'm sure we'll hear more about that later. House Bill 1004, I talked about on pre-kindergarten education already. That has been adopted by both the House and Senate and actually signed by the Speaker and the President pro tem all on Friday. I think that was 21st. And again, that increased the pilot program from 10 million to 22. House Bill 1005 on Superintendent of Public Instruction, authorized by Representative Bosma to abolish the office of the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, was also adopted by both the House and Senate on Friday. House Bill 1043 on referendum process and remonstration process. This is the bill which Representative Torres changed to the referendum length from seven years to eight years was attached to. And it was also adopted by the House and Senate on 4/21. So, they were obviously busy on Friday. House Bill 1009 on School Financial Management authored by Representative Anthony Cook and sponsored by Senator Lou Kenley. We've talked about this a little bit. It proposes to eliminate the School General Fund, create an education fund to be used as exclusive fund to pay expenses allocated to student instruction and learning, and create an operating fund and other changes. It was also adopted by both the House and Senate on 4/21. From a quick review, it appears it's going to be effective in January of 2019. So, that'll be something that we'll have to learn about what that means going forward. And finally, the other bill that we've followed throughout the session, House Bill 1082 on redevelopment commission and having a membership from the school board, a voting member on the school board. As I reported earlier, that bill did not pass this session. So, that bill did not pass. So, that's your brief summary and I know that at least a few of us are going to be at the ISBA. I'm sure we'll get a much more detailed analysis from them.
Thanks, Mike. Dr. Wall, you have a few words to share?
Yeah, we are in the middle of iStep, as many of you may know. And I wanted Amy to give us just an update on how that's going process-wise.
Thanks. We are in our second week of the iStep window. Most of our students will be completed with iStep by Friday, April 28th, but iStep does have a whole nother week next week will be used for makeups for students that were absent for the most part. So far, so it has been going well. We have not had any major glitches with the technology. And when we've had little hiccups, our absolutely fabulous tech team has been there to make sure that we didn't have an interruption of testing. So, that is a very good thing. You know, we've had a little... Some minor hiccups, but for the most part, it has been fairly smooth. I hate to say that and I don't want to jinx us. And so, hopefully, we will continue to be smooth the rest of this week.
Well, we'll just jump to quick announcements. We just have our one board meeting next month on the 22nd as well. And at that meeting, kind of our general workshop topic is each of our board members will be presenting some of the material that we learned that we think would benefit our school district from our National School Board Association meeting. So, I look forward to those reports from all of us. And I think that's it. Any other board comments?
Well, don't forget, May 2nd.
Oh, yes. Oh, thank you. Go right ahead, Mike.
Special election, May 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can vote early, which I'm doing tomorrow, so feel free to join me. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.